Evening, everyone. We're going to open up the July 6, 2022 Select Board Meeting. Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening?
I have one, and just to add, sand bids to Section 8A.
Anything else? All right, moving on to the minutes of June 15, 2022, that I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second you.
Do we have any discussion on the minutes, corrections, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Comments from the community and correspondence. I do have some correspondence from Jackie Casino. She actually lives here in Wilkett. Letting us know that the town of Wilkett is eligible for a B Trans La Moyle Valley Rail Trail Community Grant. I received this in an email earlier, and a lot of it seemed to fall under the purview of the Planning Commission when we were talking last meeting about starting to work on some of our town plan issues. And so I sent it on to the Planning Commission, and they're going to meet and look at that. So it's actually funding to, you know, establish improving sidewalk, walking to the rail trail, or amenities like could be water benches, right away issues if we want to do some hard installation along there, so forth. So they'll be meeting on that, and hopefully they'll come back to us with some ideas. Do we have some comments from the community at all tonight?
I'm here. I'm here to update you on the.
Okay, we do have Brook Road Project. Do you want to talk now?
No, no, I'm sure.
It's under nine seats.
That's works for me.
Okay. Anyone online today? Hearing no comments from the community.
And the same thing, you have Gulf Road down later on. We can talk about that then. You have that. Oh, I came to talk. I've talked to Kurt several times via email and on the phone, auto over way trucks, et cetera. And so I don't know if you want to handle that and get down to it further down.
Well, we don't usually, we can have some comments after if there's some information you want to present to us. Now, you're welcome to do that.
Okay. I had sent it, I had sent an email. I think I saw you handle it over there as far as
The photos, yeah.
Various photos. Well, lots are shorted, you know, our town roads, most of them, if not all, I have traveled all of them, but are rated at 12 tons. Gulf Road, Ridelet, is rated at six tons because of the bridge, or at least that's what it says at both ends of it. Last week, I counted about 50 trucks, basically single, double, triple rear axle dump trucks carrying gravel that are anywhere from 25,000 to 70,000 pound trucks running over that bridge. You know, I've had various emails back and forth. If you want to interject, but it's something where from a maintenance, safety, various other issues, you know, today the graders were going down Gulf Road, you know, it's an expensive process, right? And it probably wouldn't have to be done if the trucks weren't pounding on those roads. North Wilkett Road is a 12-ton road. I see tractor trailers when I'm down there, you know. This past week, I saw a log truck. It was a 90,000-pound brick building. And so from an infrastructure standpoint, from a safety standpoint, there's no control. Actually, today was the first time since I've lived here that I've actually seen a sheriff on Gulf Road. You know, and they basically said that they, it's not their gig. They don't handle overweight stuff. And they were going to hand it off to the DOT, excuse me, the DOT. You know, but same thing, you know, I've been told various times, good luck, because you're probably not going to see the whole of it. Control. And so I'm sure the town doesn't have the money to replace North Wilkett Road. I think we have roads that are discolored roads. You know, that bridge is 55 years old. It's been posted at six tons for the last 10 and a half years. And it just, you know, when I've, I've actually called a couple of trucking companies to say, hey, because I live right there at the bridge. And, you know, one of them told me that they had permission from the town. They all told me basically, go jump in the lake and it's a bunch of political BS. So it's one of those things where, you know, I came to you to kind of see if there's anything that can be done, you know, from a safety and a tax level standpoint. You know, the roads just aren't set up for it.
So Kurt did convey to me your concerns, and we've been doing a bunch of research on that, and I will present that later in the evening of what I've, what I've found out to the board and what they just want to do with that information. Okay? So we have a special guest tonight. We have Representative Dan Noys here, and our new Senator, Rich Westman. We are now in La Moyle County for the Senatorial District, starting in January. They wanted to stop by and say hi.
Yeah, it's been what, 40 years since you've been in the Senate District in La Moyle, and I'm happy to help you there.
Yeah, just to stop in and check in with the board, seeing any concerns you had for the upcoming in the past session or upcoming, if there's anything that you wanted to make sure the lines of communications are open, and you can talk to us about, you know, what some concerns you may have are, or what we should be thinking about as we go the next stage of sessions. Major part of it, but.
I would state that grants from the agency of transportation dealing with the rail trail, I'm happy to help with that. I've had a fair amount of luck with that, and I take great pride in the fact that I've been around for the rail banking all the way through the, what will be the completion of the project. I'm more than, I'm willing to go to that to help with supporting agreements.
Thank you. So were you ever on the Transportation Committee, Rich?
I chaired the Transportation Committee in the, in the House for five years. During that time, well, before that, I was Chair of Appropriations, the rail banking of the La Moyle Valley Railroad, which started this whole process. We put the budget through yours. Chair of Appropriations and pulling up of the rails, but basically all of that piece happened during the five years. And the original grant from Sanders came while I chaired the appropriations.
Well, what I was getting at was, I think one of our major concerns is paving on the North Wilkett Road, which is a federal aid highway. And just trying to navigate to find out if there's other pots of money out there for federal aid highways. I was actually reading something, which I, I took a picture of it, so I'm not playing with my phone, but it says in the orange book that under certain conditions, federal funds may be available for paving projects on town highways if included on the RPC/MPO priority list. And this is under, so I'm not sure what that is.
Who's the, who's the, are you the, is the road commissioner? Are you the rep for the, oh, what's the name of the committee, the?
TAC.
We have a TAC.
I'm on TAC.
Yeah, you're on TAC. So it's not the TAC that they're looking at. They're looking at something else.
I don't know what RPC/MPO means.
I think it is that Regional Planning Commission and Chittenden County, they have an MPO. Which we don't, which the rest of the state doesn't have. The MPO is kind of a, in, I think in the minds of the feds, this is not the technical term, but it's a souped-up model, but the rest of us have in, and they have some power in the distribution of their money. Every year when the TAC puts together their priorities, if that was on the priority list there, I, it gives you a bump because the first, most projects are 100 points you get to, in, on a pecking order. The first 20 of it is what the TACs do, and, and that's the starting.
Yeah, we just finished this year's, actually, but I will talk to Rob about that.
You should, and if you have any specifics about it, I'm happy to go to that in the agency. One of the lucky things for us is because Michelle Boomhauer was head of our planning commission so long, she there, there's a little.
Don't know what we're talking about.
There's a connection here.
Right, I'm Michelle, yeah.
Yeah, and there's that connection here, and she's really good at helping stuff along here.
So remember, you probably remember when Stephanie Bordeaux was legislator before me, you know, she tried to get the state to take over that road because it connects two state highways. The state would have nothing to do with it, but it's a very heavily traveled, you know, road, and, you know, we've had two times we've had to close that road due to flooding in the last few years, and people just are up and armed. I mean, a lot of people travel that road.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm glad to talk to, talk to her about that, Rich.
Well, that's, I think that's a priority because we, you know, we can't afford it, you know, we just got a $232,000 paving grant, but that'll do like a mile.
Yeah.
By the time we finish and come back, I'll start all over again and.
Yeah, we're kind of forced into patching at this point, and the amount of commercial traffic under that road has, has grown exponentially the past couple of years.
So they'd have to enforce the wait let us in order to discourage that. You can't, as a federal highway, even though the sign says 24,000, you can't stop people who use it.
So I need, what I need to know is who to talk to, who a contact would be that regulates federal aid highways to learn more.
Yeah, that would be to do with that.
Yeah.
That's also a emergency highway. Yeah, that's designated as an emergency highway. So I don't know why the town of Wilkett has to bear the cost of maintaining that road. The last count we had on that, I think it was 2,000 cars, vehicles go through there, okay? Yeah, that's considered the most dangerous intersection in the state.
I know, it's definitely on that list for sure.
I'm, I'm gonna ask if we've had this year, two, three?
Yeah.
At least two.
Where on the?
By the, Rich.
Yeah, by the, we're just right there.
Right, and we asked the state to look at that, and they did come out and take a look at it, but because they, it was a town road, they, they walked away from it. And that is a dangerous intersection.
For sure.
That's one of the reasons the trucks don't want to go around off of Gulf Road, because there are other alternatives to try to take that, let right-hand turn there. Very dangerous.
We stood there with the state and trucks come in from the village up around, had to go into the other lane, and if cars are coming down.
Right.
Just to get around. So we need to work on that. To me, that's a big priority.
Yep.
The board, other board members have other issues?
Well, I think we still are, as you know, are suffering from high cost of law enforcement, which we anticipate, we were on a 3% increase year over year, or year, every year, which is now closed out, so I fully expect to see a 6% to 8% decrease, which is tough on the town.
Yeah, for sure. And we've met with Roger a number of times on pensions because he has such turnover because of that, so, you know.
Well, Beth is going away, right?
Pardon me? Well, she said, the first thing that comes to mind, if you see the bubble over my head, wouldn't be very complimentary, George, yeah. We put language in, we both introduced bills. On the Senate side, we got the bill out of government operations, and it got to appropriations, and as usual, the treasurer came in with, we added language in the budget that costs instructs the treasurer's office with the Sheriff's Association to cost out what this would do. I, once we have that information, I'm pretty confident that if we can't get people to move, that we will put something in the budget that helps this very small group of people. I think, I think what you're talking for deputies is only 108 in the whole state. And, and it's only, it's seven of the 14 counties. So you've got, and the, the two counties that are penalized the most are Wyndham and us. And so I think, I can see a path that we got forward once we get that settled down. But it's been like cold and deep because the treasurer has been just terrible.
So, so new treasurer, also new Chair of Government Ops in the House, so.
And one of the things we're talking about is approaching Michael P. Check with the Sheriff's Association ahead of time to try to nail down some of the people that are running before they get there.
Running for treasurer, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Getting anyone in from the Sheriff's Association and trying to at least get them educated before we get there, so we can get that. Because the retirement issue is, you know, it's a 30-year retirement
Right.
that we have, and, and the other half of the deputy of the sheriff's offices and the municipals and the state police are all 20-year.
Yeah, right.
And that's, that's why we're losing everybody.
Yeah.
And I think they said, and this, I might be wrong, I think it's close to $60,000 to give these deputies all trade up.
Oh, yeah.
And then they move.
Yeah.
So we end up educating, you know, all these individuals to go to work for other municipalities that are in there 20-year.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so we need to keep some of the costs out.
It, we're doing our best to move that issue, but it's been an uphill battle. When the treasurer comes in, she's been like wet blanket on the whole.
Well, I was glad to hear the retirement.
But I'm hopeful that come next year, if they don't do anything, we'll have the numbers about the costs and and there's enough support on the Senate Appropriations Committee to to move some.
We have no idea with the House Appropriations because we're pretty much getting all moved. It's only four members coming back.
And the whole leadership in the House Appropriations Committee.
And Government Ops.
So we'll see. I'm happy to have you back.
That's all. Yeah.
And I will compliment you when the, you advocated for Wilkett, you're effective to be together.
Thank you.
About time.
Well, in reapportionment processes in the Senate, at different times, they had Waterville, Beltonier, Franklin County, they had Wilkett, it weren't Arleens County, Eaton, Arleens County, and Elmore and Washington. And we had to lose 5,000 people by doing that. I didn't want to see all the small towns in the county. I'm disenfranchised.
So definitely, stuff comes up. Feel free to call us anytime. Glad to come to any meeting you're having. You know, definitely want to, want to hear what's going on, where we can be effective to help the town, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think one area that, in some of the work that I've been doing, is finding the right support within the state. It's been very difficult. We've been working on this Gulf Road issue, and it's been very frustrating just trying to find the right person.
Costs.
That's what, that's what we're probably the best at, is sorting through that.
Because we can just, you know, just start with commissioner and work your way.
Well, that's what I said.
That's the easiest way to do it.
She started, she started with the governor of West County.
Yeah, okay, we can start with the governor too, but I was gonna send you to commissioner. So you might as well start there.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to stay.
Yes, and that's why it's gonna be the grant for.
Right, Key, but I don't see him here. Is he online? He said he was going to Lieutenant Person. Yes, and I did talk to him. So I will just tell you about that grant. So we received, do you know the background on that? We received a $200,000 flood resiliency grant for the North Wilkett Ball Field area to preserve our infrastructure along the road. And their recommendation was to move the parking area because that's where it comes around the corner and all the debris goes. Move the parking area down with a little path and kind of reconfigure the ball field a little. And so Seth Jensen from La Moyle County Plan and Commission is working on that other grant with us, and he and Tasha recommended that we apply for this recreation grant to build the all parking area because it's not included in the grant. And so I was asking Key not to write the grant, but to give us his vision of what he wanted there, because you have to write the grant with vision.
Right. Well, they just know that that grant, a BGS grant, they're 25,000. I think there's 250,000 in the budget for that particular one. I don't serve on the recreation one, but I'm on the community services one for that, and you know, we see a lot of $25,000 ones, so the smaller ones typically do pretty well.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would cost too much to build a parking area.
Yeah.
I mean, there's an access from the North Wilkett Road down because that was a flood byout, and there wasn't a driveway there, but it, it needs to be cleared and gravelled.
And Johnson got it for work on their skate park last year, year before, so, you know, I think this is probably in line with the grant requirements, and, you know, insist on that to help.
Okay.
Not on that committee.
Yeah, most of all those grants, towns like Johnson, ask us for letters of recreation.
Yeah.
That's pretty easy for us to do.
Okay, I know we see a lot of the larger apps from more, you know, UVM medical, and some of the bigger ones, you know, are looking for a million-dollar project, and we're just providing the 25,000, or they're asking for 25,000, so a smaller project with some matching funds, just more out to get funded, but we're not, they're not asking us to either be this little municipal part of it, or, you know, the whole thing, so. Then we'll get them for senior centers looking for $300 for an air conditioner. Those ones are pretty easy.
So I think we're gonna move on and just table Key until he comes. We have Tim, Tim Euros on the video.
Hi, Linda, I am here.
Okay, so Ballet Wilkett is here. We're talking about scheduling fees and communication on usage. I sit on the ballet board, so I am going to recuse myself, and Kurt is going to take over this portion of the agenda.
Was this put on the agenda? Do you initiate this?
No. Well, the ballet wanted to speak to you, and I can speak on the communication on usage. Just, I received a call from the cleaning woman who was a little upset because the ballet was in there when her scheduled time is on Wednesday mornings, and just wanted more communication on that, and it seems like one of the problems is, is that no schedule of application was filed for use after the end of June when the permit ran out. So just, we need, if, so basically, we need to have the permit in place so we know what's going on in there. We're planning a lot of work this summer on the town hall, so we just need to know when you're in there, when you.
Can I also speak up here because I'm Challenger, the Administrative Director for Ballet Wilkett, so I am actually involved in the day-to-day. So I may have information that Tim may not have because I am there in the day-to-day, okay?
Great.
So you want to comment on that at all?
Sure. I do keep in touch with your cleaning woman, Pam. I do let her know when we are there. And I do let her know if, you know, there's someone there on a Saturday or a Sunday and we need a vacay. You know, I do let her know that someone will be there in the town hall, so because she sometimes will clean on a Sunday. I also let her know that we would be there during the day on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday in June. And I also let her know that we would be there Tuesday and Wednesday of July. That means yesterday and today. But the the difficulty there was, this meeting was tonight, and so this was, we were trying to actually request. Rental just for the two days, but I couldn't do it until tonight because this is on schedule meetings.
I guess what I would say is that. You shouldn't really be communicating with a cleaning lady. That's really Belinda's job to let a cleaning lady know. When someone's there on the weekend or so forth, but if we have your schedule. We know that you're in there or when you're not. And so our cleaning lady is gonna be there on Wednesday mornings. Because she attends church and would like Sunday off, so that's gonna be moving forward on that.
Okay.
But Wednesdays are days that you're scheduled in July.
No, actually, it was only this Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
For the rest of the summer, no, we are not there at all.
At all?
No.
Okay.
No.
So that also the the classes shut down over the summertime?
We actually are not there usually in the month of August, but that was also something that I was going to. Request if we were to have. Some classes that we call Back to Ballet just before the school begins again. Sometimes we'd just like to have some of our dancers come in for a refreshing kind of system dance. But usually they're in the evening and they're not during the day, but we would schedule something for the evenings. And, you know, if we could just actually rent space on a daily basis, that would be helpful and I can fill out the forms. As I have here. But we just needed to request that.
So rental of the space you're looking for daily rental base members could.
Probably only for August because we don't have anything scheduled for July. It would probably be. The last, very, very last week of August, just before school begins, I guess. School actually begins the last week of August. But it would be, yeah, either the third or.
And what is, what is the arrangement now is that rentals?
350 a month. Yeah, and that's actually what I have here as well. Because our rental agreement did end at the end of June. And certainly, you know, we will pay for the two days that we were there yesterday and today, for sure. I just need to fill out a form for that. I only have one.
Yeah, yeah.
But this is a request for a continuation of our rental agreement from September through June. So September of 2022 to June of 2023. Yeah. And I did specifically put the days here. We usually then Monday through Saturday. But during the week, Monday through Friday, we're only there in the evenings. And on Saturday, we're there probably from nine o'clock in the morning until around three in the afternoon.
And so for cleaning during that period of time, what, if you're in the evening, Monday through.
Right.
Right. So.
And during the day on Saturday.
Cleaning on Wednesday.
It would not affect, yeah, it would not affect that you're cleaning the person at office. Yeah, she would be fine. And it had worked out, you know, quite well until two Wednesdays.
Got it.
Yeah.
So, so the request then to the board is. To enter into a new agreement starting in. September through June, right?
But also the dates, we need a price for the dates that she's going to have. Yes, if she's not paying 350 for the month and they don't want to. Yeah, is it, I mean, it's stated here that it's $60 for the rental card a day. So. I mean, I'll fill out the forms and certainly, you know, remit that amount to.
So what she's asking is. Can you pay $60 a month for the two days in July and a week in August?
If we, yeah, if we were to do the rental in August, we are not quite sure yet.
And then she's asking for a rate on the new for the year.
Right, yeah.
No, the year.
Right, okay, got you. So a new rate for the new year. Are we?
Hi, I don't know if it's time for me to speak up here or not. I don't want to step on anything Charlene is. Asking for. So let me just say, ask if Charlene is finished presenting, but I've got a couple of thoughts to add as well.
That part I certainly am. There's, yeah, just one other thing I would like to ask of the board.
Do you want to go ahead, Charlene?
Oh, the only other, yeah, the only other request, since we had missing money, which has not happened to us in only years. We've been in the town hall, but unfortunately about a month ago, we did have missing money. So. We would like to request being able to put up a deposit, you know, a. Box so that.
A deposit box?
Yeah, deposit box so that it can be a lockbox and we can have our, you know, our families put the money in there and I have a key so. Yeah, we would, yeah.
Okay.
Have that happen again. Is that okay if we were to put the lockbox in, say, the entry area there?
I would, would you buy the lockbox?
Oh, yeah.
Any thoughts on that? Any find? It's a historic building. I think we can probably, yeah, I think we can find places to put a lockbox without damaging it. Any, any objection? No. Okay. Who would do the installation of the lockbox?
Who would put it in? Probably me, you're a friend of mine.
Okay, okay. Probably we should just identify where you want it.
Well, yeah, that's why I had asked because I would not, someone would probably. To say, okay, that's a good place for it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
All right, well, Charlene actually covered quite a bit of what I was prepared to present, so we'll be fast. First, I want to say. Before everything, thank you so much to the town of Wolkett for allowing Ballet Wolkett to continue operating at the. At the Old Town Hall. You know, we've appreciated having a home for the, literally the decades that we've been there. So we want to continue to operate in Wolkett. It's kind of central to our mission statement. To continue to operate in a place like Wolkett and Wolkett's our home, it's part of our name, and we're looking to continue to do that. We are in a little bit of, strike that for now. We have reorganized and we are now a nonprofit and a tax exempt organization and we're sort of in the process of building up our human capacity. Which means fundraising, big capital projects, and doing what we need to do to like have tuition support for our students and. A much improved dance space that we can call our own and hopefully. What we find for our own dance space will continue to be in Wolkett and that's what we're planning on. That said, as so many other places have experienced, COVID has dealt a pretty significant blow to Ballet Wolkett. And while we have fantastic artistic directorship and. Executive level directorship of the organization, we are financially hurting right now and that was the basis for. The request to reduce the monthly rent that we pay to the town of Wolkett and I think I heard Charlene make that request. Am I correct about that? The audio is kind of weak.
I don't think we heard that. I don't think we heard.
Okay, well, then what we're looking at is at least some sort of a short term monthly adjustment on the rent. And I want to say that I'm slightly embarrassed to even have to ask because I feel like we're already. Getting a fantastic gift from the town of Wolkett in the form of the. Low rental for the use of the building and how valuable that's been to us, but we're still, like I said, trying to pull up our shoelaces and put together a. A plan here to continue to exist. So we're watching pennies wherever we can. So. Understanding the gift that Wolkett has continually presented to Ballet Wolkett. This is a sort of below pressure and soft request, but if the board can see any way to reduce our monthly rent. We would appreciate that sort of breathing room. So that's the first ask. The second ask is. Improvements to the space that we could make. Charlene asked about the lockbox and I think I understood that was gonna be fine. We'd also like to put. Cubby holes, cubby lockers for the dancers to put their, store their materials in just for organizational purposes. And I suppose we can discuss whether it will be permanently attached in the building or at some point renewal removable. If we're gonna move to a different spot within Wolkett. So that's one. And then the second one is, and this one's a little bit bigger, but we would like to, on our own dime. Repaint what is already painted inside the building. In other words, we'd like to get rid of that. Bucks furniture surplus brown and do something a little bit lighter and more cheerful on the walls. So. That's our second ask. And I think that encompasses most of what we're looking for immediately. But again, I want to reiterate how thankful we all are for the opportunity to operate out of the Old Town Hall. You know, that, that is what Ballet Wolkett is and thank you again for that. So I think that's all the talking I need to do unless there's questions.
I have a question for our treasurer actually on. Our operating overhead of that building.
We don't make enough money.
Yeah. But do we know, we, we'd take some research, I guess, to.
Yeah, I think.
Figure out the.
I mean, we get as much rent as we budget for, but. Fuel costs and, you know, electricity and stuff doesn't come around in the general. It's usually, I think we get around, I'm gonna gas here, we get about five and the cost is about.
So we're losing 50% on the building.
And that's no major repair to anything, but that's like the soul of the water, you know, the, the general.
So when you mentioned you're looking for a short term reduction. This is, I mean, is that, you know, over the course of a year, two years?
Time wise, you know Ballet Wolkett has existed for 40 years, so it feels like whatever we ask for is probably. Still a, some significant percentage of our total existence, but you know, my feeling is either we're gonna pull this together and. And start to fly the way we intend to within a year or two, or. I hate to say it, we don't really deserve to exist. So it's kind of like we're at that point. As I said, we've got new leadership, we've got incredible energy and talented staff. Either we're gonna make this fly or.
Yeah. Any of those having questions about the rate?
I just, after we're gonna get our increase in heating, I don't see how we can. By the time we get the fuel bill, which is going up, electric's gone up. I mean, electric alone has gone up 20, 15, 20%.
Right.
So to ask for a short term cut, I think we can't really.
I think we recommend that we do that, you know, bring that back for the next meeting. I think as far as the cubbies go, I don't see any issues there. Again, I, again, it being a historic building. Probably would rather not attach to. You know, have it be freestanding. Try to hear a few new screw and nail holes in the buildings.
Now, the cubbies, how tall are we talking here? And how, how wide, you have some estimate? Because.
Well, yeah, we don't, we don't have a actual plan yet. Be happy to work with you on the, the dimensions and the details of it, but certainly understand your point about no permanent attachment. So it's more a matter of. We just accommodate some cubby space somewhere in the building, probably near the kitchen wall kind of thing.
Is there cushions left over in the whole school building?
No.
That's stuck out?
No, the reason I asked about the size was because I think for safety reasons, you still would want it anchored. Along the top to a wall because there was an unfortunate incident some years ago where. Bank of Lockers went over and killed a kid at school.
Oh, good Lord.
And, and you just don't, we don't want that to happen. So you're gonna have a few screw holes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, for safety reasons.
There used to be some ballot voting boxes up on the stage in the back corner, right in the corner. Would it be possible to put the cubbies up there and use the same area and basically the same screw? Screwing method or whatever.
But the whole idea was when students come in and classes are changing. If you've got 20 little kids taking off their wet boots coats, some want to leave, some want to come. And they're all over the floor. You can't even walk. You can't even find your shoes. And then you've got parents helping the students put on their coats. So it would have to be something. They thought right in the front hall. When you came in somewhere.
I think we can make it work. In painting. Are you talking about the ground color inside?
Yes.
Bucks brown?
Surplus brown, I'm guessing.
No.
I don't know what the color would be. It's something aesthetically pleasing and that would be not problematic for whoever else uses the building. While we're there and after we're gone, if we're gonna be gone, but something brighter than that brown.
And this would be painting wood or?
Only what is already painted, I think, is what we would want to limit to, unless you have a different idea about it.
Okay, so for income, we budgeted for 4,000 and we got 4,730. Or so 4,730 and we spent to date, you might have some bills out there that we don't know yet and we haven't received from July. But we have spent $6,462.46.
Is that last year?
That we just ended. So actually, we did better this year than we did done, we've done in years past.
Now, there have been no other rentals?
Yes, there has.
Of recently, right? But I mean, for the whole COVID period, there was none.
Last July, I started doing some.
I'm just wondering if those numbers reflect normal rental rates or.
Yes, some of the 60s. I will say it's hard. I will say it's hard to rent out the town hall with the ballet using it. Because it has to be, if they use it on a Saturday, it don't necessarily clean as good as the people who are going to rent it on Sunday, and which should be clean for them? Then they are upset, because we don't have between the ballet and them renting it on Sunday, and a lot of those that they had to clean.
Well, that sounds like that can be
But our cleaner was not available Saturday night.
Right, but the ballet itself has to clean.
Well, they're supposed to pick up after.
Yes, they do. I have actually gone in many, many times and cleaned before, mopped and swept and cleaned the bathrooms. Yes, many, many times, and many occasions when someone was sewing jeans, he in there on Saturday and, you know, things like that. And I always make sure that the mirrors are moved around and that things are put away so that the space is very, very clean.
But the floor doesn't come up, though, that is the other problem.
The what?
The floor.
The floor what?
So the people who rented on Sunday have to contend with the floor.
In what way?
It's not wood floor, it's the mats are down.
Oh, oh, so you mean the floor that we have down in Marley is unpleasant to run, is that what you mean, that they would rather have?
Well, they're afraid you're going to hurt it somehow.
Well, it will ruin the floor if it's taken up every time, it will totally
I realize that.
pull apart the floor.
Well.
Yeah, you can see it when you try to finish it where the tape is pulled up.
Layers.
But this sounds like something that can be worked out.
Well, yeah, in some way, I mean, we have in the past taken floor off when we needed to.
Yeah.
And then it just takes time to put it back down. But yeah, we have done that in the past, taken it up.
Well, my thought is, it really is going to leaves the reduced rate issue. And I don't know what anybody else's thought is, but I think it would be worthwhile, and I don't know what your timeframe is, to kind of really research in depth. That class. But, you know, Linda points out a problem. Four thousand in, six thousand out. And so but I'm just wondering, does I, I just think the board should have a little time to think about that and recreate it. If you all agree.
Well, I certainly understand your decision to contemplate it and come to a decision in due course. Makes perfect sense. And maybe the same is true for the, the painting request as well.
Yeah, the painting, I don't know, I mean, I, we're, we're looking at also doing, we're attempting to find resources to clean up the outside of that building as well. It's, you know, it's, it's so close to 15 that it's it wears 15 on its front.
That's a fact.
Yeah.
Well, the other difficulty that you have, well, it's is because of the dip there, if we have a ice little ice ring
Yeah.
that forms there, so I don't know, filling it in somehow would probably
Yeah.
So the pallet there right now is great, because then we don't have a huge puddle.
Yeah, we threw the pallet in as a band-aid last winter, because it was going from a mud hole to a nice but it was dangerous. But I think that's part of our exterior plan is to, you know, well aware of that problem. The thing is, very, very close to 15, it's dangerously close.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's all I would have.
Come on, yeah. You can come in, it's got to be quiet.
So I guess we'll have some deliberation on that and get back to Charlene and Tim.
Yeah, Charlene, this with you, the proposed contract was from September to
Did that go to Linda?
This is your round.
This is the year, yeah, this is the year round. This is for, yeah, this is for reduced requests, this is just
This isn't
And you will fill out one for July and stuff.
Okay.
Okay, it doesn't look like we have key. I'm going to ask, because we have two guests here, we want the board be willing to move the agenda to the project updates.
That's up to you guys.
Well, we should just fall asleep.
I'm in the morning.
Okay.
I'm going to sign off, thank you all, appreciate it a great deal, good to meet you all, thank you again.
Right. Well, then we'll move on to the project managers' report.
And I'll try to be quick with this. So the activities that we got on going on, courses, East Hill Road demolition, that was delayed. It was due to happen last week. However, when all metals went up there, there was a dog in the shed. And it was also noticed that there was quite a number of cats in the area. So we decided to cancel the demolition. And we called in Dean Mercer, who has collected 16 cats, I believe, so far. He's done that through Havahart traps. These are feral cats, so he's trying to socializing them, so they're, they're in good hands. The dog is also gone. And Dean has spent a fair amount of time up there, morning and evening, and is convinced that Ed is gone. So therefore, we rescheduled for the 13th, which will be next Wednesday, and the demolition will occur next.
Where is the dog going?
The dog is with Ed. And, but we don't know where Ed is right now. He does show up out of nowhere, but so we're going to have to scout it out in the morning of the demolition. Pretty comfortable, he's, he's well aware of the situation, and he's removed a lot of stuff, including cars and so forth. Suppose he's collecting metal, metal comms.
So was the price of the demolition dropping? Because there's quite a lot of stuff missing.
Yeah. You know, some of the, the way that all metals works is they, they price their demolition with the material, so if there's a lot of metal material, that's value. So the fact that those cars are missing is also missing the value.
Yeah, right, but I mean, the building is also now just a 10 by 10.
Right.
There's no dog kennels, there's no, there's nothing. When I went up and looked. So as far as I can see, if all they're tearing down is a 10 by 10 shed.
And the bus.
Taking off a bus and a kitchen stove and a bigger than that roll around, I think the price should be a lot lower than what they're asking.
Okay.
I mean, for, they wouldn't even need a big dumpster now. Before, they would have to have at least a 10 yard dumpster. Now they're lucky, they need a three yard.
Well, I'll call around and we'll go up there again and
I mean, I was up there a Sunday, and there's hardly anything there. I mean, yeah, the bus is going to have some weight in that little stove, but other than that, that's all they're going to get.
Okay. So I'll check the drive and see if we can reevaluate it. Just an update, the Volvo loader has been delivered, it's been in action. And very good machine. CAI Technologies, which is providing mapping information for the website, has been starting to process data. We think we're probably five weeks out before we start to see our first display from CAI. Mowing, road mowing, we, we had an agreement with Bill Allen. And you're looking to start in late July. That's always a tough call, you know, everybody's, late July is, when is it? So put the best of our minds together, and late July is what we're targeting for now, it also fits. Hybrid system is been, Dolan has been working with Elmore and has been extremely busy so far this summer with other things. And, but it does have a recommendation coming up.
I have it right now, you want to hear it?
Sure.
So Elmore has a Logitech self-contained system. And the system is fantastic, they are adding another service to it that allows them to do one touch meetings. That service is very expensive, and in my experience, I don't think financially it makes sense. We can do very little training, I can have a little laminated car that will do all the directions we need to operate, start an operating meeting. We could even do it on a tablet, other than a, it doesn't need to be a computer. And we could start getting to here with very minimal training and also have the capability to solve any Zoom bombing situations. It's, it's pretty easy to do within a tablet interface. So the Starlink is working really well. The next process would be to hardwire it to here and to some of the other offices in order to be able to move off of the other system when that time comes with the co-file. And so my recommendation is that with three remote microphones mounted on the ceiling in here. And that would, so I think Senator Westman was probably the most difficult to hear in the room today, because our microphones are in front.
Right.
And we have microphones built in here. One above you guys, probably one above Alan and one above the back. And I think we have fantastic coverage in which nobody, this is the biggest weakness of our system now, is the audio. And that was to solve that. The other big gain is the camera would be self-seeking. So nobody would have to be here trying to aim it. And which is good, because you've got to seem to move around week to week as well. So that makes it a little tougher. It also allows for the capability to continue to use the elbow and switch it to show documents. So it's a fantastic system, I don't need, don't think we need the extras.
That's good, yeah. Do we are you going to come up with a B&amp;H recommendation?
Yeah, I'll have it, I'll have it, well, I'm going to, if you're available tomorrow again.
Yeah.
Then I will be here as soon as tomorrow, and we'll get this covered.
Great, excellent.
Is that laptop designated for the Zoom?
This one is my laptop.
So isn't that the problem we ran into with the Forest Committee? Do we have a laptop that's designated?
That would be replaced with a tablet. That would be permanent.
Tablet would live in this box, the alternative is we could use a laptop.
Well, we need something, because I think that was the major problem with the Forest Committee, was they didn't have anything and they didn't know they had.
That's the goal, is for people to be able to walk in here and start behind me.
Is that something you can purchase soon?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what the B&amp;H was
Yeah, I think, I think we'll have that probably in the middle of next week. I think there's a pretty good chance I can have some measure of the system running for the next life review. If there are any meetings in the interim between now and then, just let me know and see what we can get.
Big problems with the Forest Committee, I was under the impression that they designated somebody. Because
I think I had been coming.
Yeah.
I, I was somewhere.
I, yeah, I, I missed it, I blew it.
And so we will be having a school ops meeting next Wednesday, no. Yes.
Do you want to keep the schedule?
I say, try to put it on the calendar.
It's on the calendar, right?
Yeah.
So I'll just keep that and see. I'm, I'm pretty excited to, to put this together and actually be a bit more hands-off kind of the fall ability, right? And if it's acceptable, I was thinking it might be nice to at the barbecue in August, let people know about how they can participate, either in person or remotely, and just maybe have a tiny little information.
Yeah, we really need that.
Do you want to add it?
I'd be happy to.
Great.
Yeah.
Our first one.
All right, thank you. Handyman needs, so Bernard has resigned as of last Friday. And so in the short term, that creates some needs. Yeah, just the trash that comes out of this building. And just kind of odds and ends that he used to do. It I, I put the handyman as a, as a real need over the long term. Because there's a whole host of things that need to get done, some of them over over the hall, some of them are up at the transfer center. And it's just an ongoing list, and we're kind of going backwards at this point. So I don't know what the, I guess the real short term question is just getting town office stuff up to the transfer station, right?
And Silvio is willing to get it on the Wednesdays that he picks up his check. But I don't know if you want to hire him to do that.
So how much is there? I mean, he just does a regular car.
Yeah.
I wouldn't imagine, unless the town hall has some other reservations, it'd be much, there wouldn't be any over there to pick up. We should check and make sure that there is one now.
Most garbage right now is coming from the library, but that's because they're unloading a lot of books and they got a lot of garbage.
I think we might have to have some volunteers from the library. I did the run for a long time when Bernard went on disability. If unusual situations, that's fine, I think it's a chip in time.
So should we set a schedule or are we going to each do it? You asked me not to do it, you kind of
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's pretty
Well, set up a schedule, we can just sign in so we know it's our week or something.
Yeah, I'll put a schedule together. Give that to everybody.
Can we all participate in some way?
I mean, like if you go up on a Friday, I mean, on a Sunday or Sunday, you can just pick it up and pick up your stuff. I don't know who goes to the transfer station, who doesn't.
Well, I have to go separately. Whatever, my week. There shouldn't be that much.
There isn't usually. My shredding is done, so I don't have any more of that.
So the rest of this list, Linda asked us at our last meeting, rightfully so, to start to do some forward looking. And in anticipation of all variety of things. And in anticipation of all variety of things. So I put a little bit of thought to that and the things that came up in my mind, I don't think this is the time to really discuss, I just kind of want to plant the seed. Of things to think about. Because they are going to come up and they have pretty significant financial impact as well as organization. So one, as I mentioned earlier, is the sheriff's contract. Next year, I personally expect it to go up sixty percent. And it's going to, it's going to be about thirty five percent of our overall budget is the sheriff. Despite, really high. Assessors and listers. We've talked about this before, that the assessors, many towns are suffering from listers. The experienced listers being no longer available, because it's not there to find. And so we did have a conversation, I put it in your packet. And with Linda and I attended a meeting with LCPC. And. High Park Johnson. And of all places, Virginia's. And has, and it was a seed of an idea of. Putting towns together and share resources. Because if we try to do it independently, individually, it's going to, I believe it's going to be unaffordable. And just the lack of professional assessors is a serious issue. So something to think about there, I would recommend reading the town assessors discussion, which is in your packet. Because I think it gives you a really good overview of the seed and the idea. Same is true with the zoning administration. North Oak Road Paving, we have a little bit of discussion about that. That's a multi-million dollar project. And we're going to need to find significant ways to fund it. Town administrator, so you know, I came on with this role as an interim project manager. For a couple of reasons, one was to try to see through some projects. And the other was to really kind of get a feel for, you know, what are the needs? And I know it's a little bit early on, but my. I have a very strong feeling that we should start looking for a town administrator. Very, very soon, because I believe it's going to take months to find the right person. It's, it is a difficult. It is, I shouldn't say it's difficult, it requires an individual with many, many hats. You know, I've had, I've been, I'm pretty much the complaint department for the town. And that is enormously consuming versus the projects that also are, have time and money. Restrictions to them, and so I'm starting to formulate that. And I've come to the conclusion that find a full time town administrator, which I believe the town needs, may take. Months to find. And. And also. We're going to have to figure out how to pay for it. Because that's, I, I think the level of necessity is there that is going to, it's going to cost the town some money if you have it proper. Moving the town garage because the flood zone is part of our town plan, that's a big one. It's a monster of a move and something that we should be thinking. And the idea of a charter comes up too, I think it's worthwhile for everybody to kind of look at, what are the benefits? What are the pluses and the minuses of charters? The reason I bring it up is I really noticed while we're looking at some. Issues around ordinances, et cetera, that we are bound by state, a hundred percent. The state runs this town. And charter towns that have a lot more flexibility, they can have a lot more. To say about the. Future of the town. So it's worth looking in. I'll skip the handyman here because I did that before, a more of a short term, long term thing we think about is you've got to find somebody to use some plowing. For the winter here and the town hall. And finally, it's transfer station staffing. You know, I think Silvio is, he's one of the most reliable guys that ever been around. He is always there doing it, but he doesn't have any help. The Department of Corrections has really fallen short. Being able to explain, so he's up there by himself most of the time. Or he's up there with the bears. And the bears have done a number up there. And you know, Silvio is not, you know, he's just not in a position to clean up after a bear. And he needs help. And also I think we should be thinking about a succession plan. Because, you know. It's just like assessors, just like listers, just like handyman, et cetera. We don't want to get surprised every time and just shut down. Because that's what has happened in the Royal County is that they get surprised by somebody leaving, they shut down. It's not, not a good one, that's, so that's the end of that.
Well, thank you, a lot to think about. Right, let's move on to the quotes trailers.
Yeah, right.
The town garage, the town hall, I think they're in your packet.
They are. So maybe I can start with Sam. So we got quotes on Sam. Dylan went to gravel grounds.
Self.
And self, right. So the two actual quotes we got were from gravel and sawbys. And the gravel plan is coming in at seven twenty five, which is the lowest. The other declined a bit. And I think that if you consider all the factors, the location, the amount of fuel. That we need to consume to all that sand, so the gravel location is much, much. Good location, it's the lowest price that we've been doing, working with them. As we did last year, and this is a three year. It is good for three years, however. Gravel wants to. Renegotiate if fuel drastically increases. So any questions about?
So it looks like we signed it, but I do not see anywhere on here where it says it's good for three years and I think that's important to happen.
We should add that in your.
Because, you know, as you know, some people are trying to pull back on their contracts.
Yeah, yeah.
And we were paid to accept twenty five personally?
Yeah.
I believe so. Seven twenty five, we're paying now for.
Same.
And, yes.
Yeah.
So. Do we want to make a motion now with the amendment that we have a reissue with the three year. Clause. Gravel construction, I'll make the motion now, we go forward with this.
You have a second, Thomas?
Awesome.
Okay. Any further discussion?
We'd prove like to start all in same tomorrow if they can.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
So Carrie, so as, as long as they give us a new contract to sign that says this is good for three years. Thank you for doing that.
It's a quote for a trailer, we talked about the trailer before. This one, it was a ten ton trailer that we quoted previously. The guys feel that a trailer is really a long term asset, it's not. Quite like a truck or a machine. Hold up longer than that and ask if we could look at a twenty ton. Instead. The argument is that the. The excavator, which will be up from its lease in seven years. That the trailer would still be a useful active trailer at that point and it gives us the option in seven years. To buy a bigger excavator at that time, it just leaves that option open. So it is a seven, I think the last meeting we agreed moving some of the funds that we moved. Twenty.
Three, was it twenty three, Jordan? To the front, having the fund balance, twenty three thousand something.
And this one's five thousand.
Right. And where would we find the money? Would we take it out of our capital, well, we have a capital account of three hundred thousand.
Right.
So is that, just so we're clear on where the additional money would come from.
But what's the difference between the two trails, the price?
Five thousand.
Five thousand. Goes from ten to twenty, it's a big difference, I mean.
Yeah, we don't know if you're going to need it.
Right. But if we do need a twenty, it's a step of the ten.
Do you have a deal for it?
Oh, yeah.
It'll be a shame, but I'll figure it out.
Yeah.
So you probably should have a motion or a discussion, further discussion of whether we want to. Go forward with this and take the balance out of our capital. Funds.
I think my concern is, I don't know if we really need a bigger backhoe. If you're getting that big, then I think you're going to have to. Hire it out. You're not just digging ditches or fixing ditches anymore, you're actually doing big work. Would you agree with me?
I think the excavator we have right now is efficient for.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and if you get into anything bigger, then I think we really should hire it out or get it branded out or something.
But the end of seven years, the excavator belongs to us, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but.
At the end of the seven year lease, the excavator we buy for like an hour.
Yeah, it's ours.
Yes. So. I mean, that excavator is seven years, probably will have less than four thousand hours, it should go for fifteen per minute.
Yeah. Which covers the inflation, it covers inflation over seven years. I, I just, yeah, just. So this is a request from the road crew along, I, you know, I think we all settled on the ten last night. But I did want to, you know, under their request to see what was stopping.
Any other thoughts?
If we're not going to later on upgrade to a larger excavator.
Then you don't need it.
Then we don't need the twenty.
Right.
I mean, and then, you know, Kurt's concerned, like, he's probably right, just. The person's right, what we have is adequate for what we're doing. I would say we go with a ten ton.
Will you find with that, Alan?
Want me to make a motion or?
We, we already made the motion about the other one.
That was my question.
Yeah, we, we designated the fund.
The funds.
Last ones, yeah, for the quote you have that you gave us last. Actually Kurt Villain's made the motion on that one.
Okay, and so the last one then is. I've been desperately trying to find. Resources for. Power washing, town hall and painting. And we found an individual, he actually moved into the old bed and breakfast down here. Bought that bed and breakfast. And his background is as a painter. Younger guy. Very, very competent, and so he asked him to give us a quote of those two jobs. And so the first job is the. Garage, which he's quoting it with, with paint seventy two hundred. With siding, it was about ten thousand. We. Painted on that, by the way, right now, whoever painted it just painted it, there's no primer or anything on that, it's just peeling off. So it's a fair amount of work to revive that. I think that. You know, with the issue of potentially moving the garage at some point in time. Would that be? Years from now is that it's going to crumble and deteriorate badly unless we do something. We got a quote of seventy two hundred. And compared to the other quote we got, seems quite crazy. Thirty thousand. And for the power wash in town hall, twenty eight hundred dollars, this would all be our book money.
No, I thought we took it on. Fund balance. Building maintenance. Yeah, no. We took, we designated.
Fifty eight months.
Now they have fifty eight, was it thirty, was it fifty eight, it was a building month?
It is eligible for her. But this is a professional power washer, we're, it includes painting the trim. Completely getting rid of the mill do. It's not just pretty up the building, it's, it's maintenance.
It looks like an economical, economical close to me. Getting terribly expensive to hire professionals to do that kind of work.
Or even find anyone to do it, that's the hard part.
Finding people starts.
It is.
Start again, ten thousand per size.
Yeah. Yeah, and he can start working on that. Later this month.
That'd be great, I think he's reasonable prices.
Yeah.
Considering all we're getting, I mean, it's going to be a nice professional job, Brian. Good job, not slapdash.
And it'd be bright orange.
What?
Let's say what?
She doesn't like the brown thing.
Sorry, I don't wanna see it in the drawer.
As long as it's not furniture shit, we will.
So should we make a motion?
I make a motion that we hire those gentlemen to do their work for us. It looks like a good deal made.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Can you turn the discussion?
What is the color scheme going to be?
What is this now?
Isn't it tan?
It's a tan or a light brown.
Well, let's have the vote. All in favor, opposed, so Karen? You can have the color.
White trim?
I don't know. I think that we have time to.
Something that won't show the dirt.
When you're talking about tan. Not a tan. Okay, check the board.
Yeah, I think we can have a color discussion.
Yeah. Send your thoughts to Kurt on the phone. My key, we're gonna sneak you back in here quickly.
Are you guys still done up there?
We already really talked about the recreation rent in this, in the board, and Eva and I talked, so we don't need to discuss that. Mainly we're discussing, have the energy discussion with you about, as I said on the phone, that we're trying to work on some of actions for the town plan. And we came across, so we have appointed you as the energy coordinator already.
Right.
But talk about some energy awareness and energy efficiency and the uses of electricity, space eating fuels and transportation fuels and different ways that we can make our building, our municipal buildings, more efficient, get off fossil fuels.
Has there been an audit of the energy use for the town in the last 10 years or any amount that way or ever?
Probably not in the last 10 years. We've had audits done at the town hall. And here, basically, all they did was change life bulbs or make recommendations. That's all I recall. But no.
The, it seems like a list of all the energy, the major energy usages in each building would be a place to start and then be able to see from there where there are places that would be, make a plan to improve those or make efficiency decisions from that, to know where we are now to where we want to get to or a place to go to.
Right. And one thing I mentioned was I thought the library would be an easy place to start because they just have those little gas or not any heaters and so forth. There was some other heating.
If a heat pump or something along those lines.
We talked about ideas about, we have that study for having solar up the building. Phil, the company fell through of looking into that again, whether we should have solar here. So just, I guess. Get a plan.
The one that did the landfill, that fell through, why did that fall through? What was the?
How hard is electric? They had their own, their own solar field, a gravel pit. I thought you remember, our electric manager was rather smart.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
There was a size issue with it? It was too big for them to take on or something along those lines?
Phase three power.
Right. Now, phase three power could be put in ARPA money. That's what I prefer to do. Something like that, that we would never have the opportunity to do. Yes, we would need to bring a lot of phase three power. There's no power out there. We need to bring it to Route 15 where there is three phase power.
Right.
Is one obstacle.
That's a pretty expensive project to increase.
Well, in 250,000.
Oh, I mean, I wasn't objecting to saying this.
Right. Might not be worth doing, but if you don't look into it and try to figure it out, you can't make a informed decision.
Right.
And.
And like I said, there's a new bill that passed the legislature and I'm not sure. I wish Dan was here, but maybe we could email him. I thought it was 218. Allowing this money to help municipal buildings become more energy efficient. So these are just ideas formulated in my head.
Sure.
People have other ones.
I think there was a, there was a discussion about LED on the street lamps.
Right, years, years ago, that's been.
Is that in place? Are they actually physically in there? I don't think so.
No.
There is something, but not, we did have the light bulbs changed, but I don't think they're LED lights.
No.
They're halving.
Yeah, they came and changed all the light, upgraded them up.
Is that, that's a big power savings.
Right.
Okay, that gives me something to start with. And I will, yeah, make a a list of all the, all the town buildings, what the, what energy sources they use for heating and the major electric sources or whatever, hot water, heating, hot water, usually the big ones. And, and then work from there to see where things could be.
Who would we have this assessment done by? Would it be?
It's that, it's that one down in Berry.
Does efficiency come along through it?
Right.
Yeah. But there's also something in Berry, I think you may have remained with it.
It was capstone, which.
Capstone, which has. At a area, you can come in the assess a building, see if it's got enough insulation.
Right.
I think you have to, they have to be low income though, for that.
I know that's one thing that they do. I don't know if they do municipal buildings or commercial buildings or that. Geared towards.
But at least he would be able to tell you who.
Right.
To contact.
Right.
Okay.
But I think a heat pump over at that railroad station, the library, would help, especially on warmer days.
If you need, because you're working during the day, if you need us to do some follow-up for you or phone calls or just email Kurt or me or someone. And we can do some of the legwork for you, because I know it's kind of difficult for you.
It's a little bit easier this year, I'm hoping, because I'm not coaching baseball. Which is five nights a week, making my own decisions. Okay, Kurt, anything else?
No, we just want to start this conversation and get some vision and, you know.
Good. That means good. I'm honored. Excited about it.
Good. That's it. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna move on to the project updates now. So what road project? Lucian, you're on.
Hey, well, we did get the telephone electrical moved over, so that's not a problem now. That's all. Cody came in yesterday, removed the bridge. I was very impressed. They did a great job and they were gone in a day. I figured you could be there at least two, three days. They were all gone. That's, and Tomlin's parking lots in. And road signs are all up. I hope they're still there. We can go check them today, but they're still there, okay? I talked to Joey Wilson today. And I haven't seen the new shop guns, but he said they have been approved and gone to the manufacturer. So that's the key player to the whole thing here. And one other thing I also talked to him about was to double-check the layout before we start work to make sure that we put this bridge on the town property and not from private owners out there. So he said he would check into that and get back to me probably tomorrow or the next day. Very important to have the bridge where it goes. And I called NNG today, who got our contract, and they didn't call me back. Soon she'll come in tomorrow or the next day, but they're, the last I knew, they were scheduled to start next week. Now, that's still on board, you know? As far as I know, the delivery is starting August 1st of pre-test. And I don't have any update on that or no. That's, that all I got.
It's all coming together.
Yeah, hopefully.
And Tomlin can get into his block, right?
Who's that, Tomlin? No, we go to my new parking lot just below the end of this trailer.
Right, okay.
And we moved this mailbox down towards North Woke Road so that she, mail carrier wouldn't have to come out and try to turn around with everybody. So it's looking good.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or?
Looking good.
And when's the expected end date? When will it be all done?
It'll definitely be done before November 1st. It should be about a six or eight week project, depending on the weather.
We told them in the latter 12 weeks.
So.
You never know.
So before snow flies?
Yes, hopefully.
Well, we do have a deadline because we got an extension from FEMA.
So I'll be taking some pictures as we go and having records.
That would be great.
All right, we need to talk about the Gulf Road Bridge. Do you want to start us off first?
Yeah, so the Gulf Road Bridge is rated or actually posted at six tons right now. And we, it came to our attention that there's trucks going over that that are much larger than six tons. And that sparked some conversation about the history of the Gulf Road Bridge and how it got posted at six tons. And that's kind of where the mystery started, unfortunately. And what we have learned is that the skip, who was the road foreman at the time, posted it at six tons to try to control the amount of truck traffic. And so the question then was, what is the bridge really rated at? If this was, you know, arbitrary posted? And in our attempts to work with state, state engineers and so forth, we learned that they do not give ratings and they won't support ratings. They will not. They will not. I think Linda finally got ahold of the right people today who reviewed the history of the bridge, the recent, it was 2021 when it was last inspected. And the rating on the bridge was good. Basically sevens were most of the ratings. And they also provided a the state statute, which is 24,000 pounds. And, and also put together load values for Bridge 5 in which they quote a three-axle truck is 51 tons, four-axle 54 tons, five-axle 76 tons, which can go over that bridge. Now, they're not gonna sign off on that, but that's that, that's where their rating comes from. Apparently, there's only one piece of equipment in the state of Vermont that can actually give them an accurate, 100% accurate rating in a bridge. We're not gonna see them go up to that guarantee. So the question really therefore is with the traffic that's going across it, do they have a overweight permit? And looking through the overweight permits today, I think there's 53 that are current overweight permits. It includes gravel, includes minash, includes the oil companies, orange, includes cell lot traffic, the trucks. However, if you look closely at the overweight permits, the permits allow for, as long as you're fully insured, can prove insurance. It allows for that traffic to go anywhere and go there, except for the Gulf Road Bridge. And that's because it was rated at six tons. So that's kind of the history. That's where we're at right now. And I don't know if you want to comment on that as where we are at this point.
I mean, I get, you know, it comes down, so when I talked to the sheriff's department, they said unless there's a town ordinance, there's nothing they can do. Nor that they want to deal with it or can deal with it because they don't deal with overweight trucks.
Right.
So even with the ordinance, they probably just kind of say, well, that's.
And the way that they made it sound was that if it went to the DOT or, you know, level, if there's no ordinance, it's a moot point. So that's what it posts things in general, I guess, is based on what the sheriff's department told me. And so because I, you know, I explained that, you know, based on our email back and forth, that, you know, we've requested more, the towns requested more presence. Literally today was the first time I've ever seen a sheriff's department.
It's not surprising.
You know, so, which isn't surprising to me either, but it's something that it really boils down to, one, it's 55-year-old bridge. It's posted. Our roads, our town roads are posted at 12 tons for a reason.
Well, it states that.
And it's something where, how's that gonna be enforced? You know, I, you know, basically, I was, and I said it earlier, I was told by one of the companies who is on, you know, we have, we have these businesses on Gulf Road. There's gravel, obviously.
Right.
You know, I don't know if that's where the townspeople understand or whatever, but it's something where there's a business on Gulf Road. There's businesses registered on North Woke Road, trucking businesses.
Right.
And there's trucks that are with their dump truck and trailer. One of the pictures that I put in here is of one of those companies. It's a, it's a four-axle dump truck that I'm guessing is a 70,000 pound GND truck. And they drag a trailer behind it, you know, probably a 10-ton trailer, like we guys were talking about earlier. Go across and it's all, we have permission from the road foreman.
I know, but they meant was they have a overweight permit.
But it's not gonna fit, but if it's not good for the road.
Right.
You know, and so I understand the gig as far as the intersection down on 15 North Woke Road. I understand the commercial traffic that it's cut off. But if we're not gonna enforce this, you know, honestly, for me, living at. But if we're not going to enforce this, you know, honestly, for me, living at that bridge, the trucks aren't the nuisance. It's cars that, you know, North Walker Road, Gulf Road are drags for us now. Because it's all cut off to get everywhere else. But it's something where if we're not going to enforce that somehow, some way, then, you know, that's the truck I'm talking about. So for not to enforce it, the wear and tear, whether it's on the 55 year old bridge, you know, Gulf Road, they just raided yesterday. If trucks weren't on that road, they wouldn't have a grade.
I mean, cars do as much damage to the road as you can, so we could, they go twice as fast.
Yeah, I, I guess I, on certain, in certain cases, I respectfully just, this is brief, but it's something where you go down at the end of the road, it is on an incline. Cause they all come back. I mean, I don't know how many go the other way, but you look at that incline coming out of there, it's all going up. And so it's something where it's a six ton bridge. It's been posted like that for 10 years. However, that came about, I don't know. And but no one the state's not going to, you said, state's not going to sign off on it. So if we don't know what the real rating on that bridge is, it was posted 10 years ago for a certain amount, for a certain reason. Now to make it more convenient for the commercial entities around here, which I own a business, I get, but it's something where the safety of the road, the maintenance of the road, part of, part of the agenda today is North Walker Road pre paved. And that road is is trash and it's just, it's overused, but it's also overweight. It's not built for that. And so, you know, it's track the trails run up and down the fourth road every day.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and it's, it's, it's four time, you know, and in the triaxle trailers that are going up and down, 90 to 100,000 pounds. It's not good for that.
Well, it's the big shortcut for them not to have to go to Harde.
They don't want to go to Harde, they're cut off. So I understand, I get that. But it falls on the town from a maintenance perspective and a dollar perspective, unless we can get federal money, this, that, the other thing of all the things you're talking about. You know, you brought up, it was the Department of Natural Resources about the bridge. They want to widen the bridge, make it too much bridge for flooding. I don't know what widening it width by helps with flooding, but
I don't know, these are, these are PhDs.
It allows to go on to move faster.
The bridge isn't wide enough to think to fall when they have to flood. Longer, longer.
Wide, yeah.
Wide enough, they have to extend the
Longer, longer. Right. So I guess until any of that happens, what does the town, you know, I can complain about all day long, but really what does a town want to do to mitigate wear and tear on our roads? And safety issues on the roads on something that's posted and has been posted longer than I've ever. You know, so, um, yeah.
You know, I guess the evolution of roads is that the, at least in my experience is that uh, the traffic and demand comes first and the infrastructure comes later to backfill. That's the way all roads in Vermont become first. One point they get that stage where there's traffic that's ripping them up and then the towns are challenged with financing and and getting funding to to be doing, which we're trying to do in the North Walker. We could, the only other option really is, uh, we talk about enforcement. The only enforcement, the sheriff is not applying enforcement, guaranteed.
Well, I did talk to DMV today, the enforcement officer Kevin. And he said that, um, one thing he suggested, if the board wanted to do this is to have an ordinance for no through truck, truck traffic. In that way, the sheriff could enforce that. The other thing is that if the sheriff's department, uh, they offer weight training to sheriff's departments. A special training course which they could take. And then they'd be trained to be able to deal with, um, enforcing that. The other thing, the other thing is the town could make a request to his office. Um, they would come down, um, here and kind of sit there and do some education to the trucks that go through, um, and then some enforcement. Or the options that he offered in terms of enforcing the weight limit.
The trucks know what they weigh. The truck know what the sign says. You know what I mean? And so it comes down to until they start and it's
But how do you enforce it? What would you do?
If you get DOT to sit there, which they're not, I, I get that, but it's something where at what point, you know, you had, I said a few times, you have a 55 year old bridge. When that bridge fails, town doesn't have the money to replace it.
That was going to be liable.
However, that's why, that's why the overweight permits.
Well, we need to make up, if we, we issue overweight permits and they said all but the Gulf Road, you know, really that means all but the Gulf Road and either we need to change our permit and change the weight on the bridge. Or we need to enforce that, um, somehow. And so I think the board needs to think about what direction they want to go. Do they want to keep that and enforce not having trucks on there or look raising the rate of the bridge, which they say is seven out of nine is a perfect score. That bridge is a seven. Um, so structurally that weight was not put on there for the bridge. That weight was put on there for the maintenance of the road.
I knew that was put on there because it now started complaining about all the truck traffic. And Nancy Shatney, I think is the one that, the other one that made a complaint about that. And that's when the sweat word at the time changed it. And the other thing, I don't believe the signs on that bridge are legal to state.
Yes, they are.
You, you checked, have they, cause when I was broker, I checked and they weren't registered to the state. They have to be registered every year, I believe. You did do it? Cause it wasn't when I was there.
Well, I think there were a few years they weren't done, but Kirk, um, did it this year.
And I spoke to the state.
February.
The day, they had all the information. They said that was posted in December of 2001. They had the exact date, they had everything. But
Did they have a, okay, so.
It sounds like a big, good move would be to get state, say on Walker Road, no, no tractors, no freight trucks, no, no heavy haul.
Well, we're just talking about the Gulf Road today.
Oh, I know that. I mean, the only way to get the state, well, we can't get that, they're not going to do anything.
No, he said he would come down. His name's Kevin. And I want to talk with him.
You know who the biggest violation of that bridge?
I don't know who goes over it because I'm not there.
When we go over that bridge in the winter time, we'll weigh over 100,000 pounds.
Yeah, we should close, we should not plow through there, uh, because that, that is extremely good.
What is the biggest violation? Be careful what you do.
I'll say this, last week, there was 50 or so trucks, not including the town. That went over that bridge.
So is the town using that as a cut through, um, too?
Yes. And I fully, like I said, I fully get that turn onto North Walker Road is dangerous. For a fully loaded truck to come up, I mean, they shouldn't be on that road here, but for a loaded truck to come up and around to make that right hand turn from here, it's dangerous. And so from a safety standpoint, Gulf Road is the way to go. It just comes down to my original. I originally brought this up because I sit there and stare out my front window at six ton weight with the signs every day. And so you've got trucks that are going over at 70,000 pounds. That's where all this is from. And saying, okay, what is this bridge really rated for? Why is it listed six tons, et cetera, et cetera? And so and it's a safe road to do it on. I don't want to say I had a problem, but no one knows what it's really rated at. Why it was originally, you know, it's all hearsay, why it was originally posted. And so it's just something where at some point, just before the bridge fails, at some point, something needs to be addressed because the truckers are going to continue doing it. They said they're going to continue doing it and they said they had permission.
Didn't we get ratings? Didn't you, I emailed you ratings from, um, Amber?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I just read off.
She said she did, huh?
Yeah, but it still doesn't state what it's going to be rated for, what it would fail at.
Says low rating for Bridge five. Where three axle is 51 tons, four axle 54 tons, five axle 76.
The, the bridge is so short.
Right.
By the time the front end gets off the bridge, the rear end is just coming on, especially with triaxle.
Right.
They put less weight on it than I own dump truck. Cause of the weight of the truck.
Right. Yeah, you're talking live load.
Yes.
Not dead load.
Which I
It's totally different. My thing is, is why they were trying to keep tractor trailers off that road is it's narrow. It's a dirt road. If you were to meet a tractor trailer in the winter with another vehicle, you're going to see problems.
From the ditch.
Well, it's either the ditch or the dump. But I think that's why they want to keep the heavy vehicles off.
Well, once Fort Hill Bridge closed down and that safer access wasn't available.
Right.
Well, that was still a sharp turn for a big break.
You're kicking up a lot of dust and that's, that's also been one of the major complaints over the past couple of years. Whether it's the pond road or actually everywhere, there's been a big turnover in housing. And yet dust complaints are are constant.
I think we have it where we should just have them enforce it.
Have them what?
Enforce it, have the LaMoyne County.
See, that's what it all comes down to. Who is going to enforce it?
LaMoyne County will. The sheriff will know. The only way they'll enforce it, they don't have any skills. They don't have any training. Um, they will not enforce it. The only way they said they could enforce it is if we had an ordinance that said no through truck truck.
And then ordinance is the sheriff will not enforce the town ordinance.
Right. Well, how are you going to do that with Sweet picking up? Our transfer station. I mean, I don't think he goes that way.
Well, if they go through truck traffic, it means they can't call from one.
Oh, okay. But they can go there and they go back.
Yeah, he has
Anybody can.
He has an overweight permit as well.
He does.
I mean, just while they, they picked up today, they just want to work with the bridge today.
Sweet did.
I know, I, it was basically, it was the, the container from the transfer station on a red truck. It's, I mean, it's everyone. I mean, it's, it just comes down to how, how
Well, it comes down to enforcing.
How, how if it can be enforced?
The bridge is rated 100,000 plus. You just read that right there. Your triaxles were 50, what you said?
Uh, three axle 51.
The bridge is more than sufficient to hold the weight of the vehicles. And changing all the trucks down on Route 15 in North Walker Road is a lot more dangerous than what ever happened to that bridge. Talk about safety. There's safety right here.
So do you want to make a decision tonight? Do you want to think about it?
I think we've got to think about it personally. It's, it's kind of a sticky one.
Well, the other thing to think about is that regardless of this bridge, uh, these trucks are overweight anywhere in Wokka. Except for 15. Except for 15, right. And we must have 10 or 12 heavy equipment businesses in Wokka all over the house. I don't think we can stop commerce. So the solution has to, in my mind, weigh that as well. I mean, I'm on her road, um, there's three heavy equipment businesses. That feed a lot of mouths.
Sorry, that's, yeah. Um, I think one of the things that I think, uh, I'm, I'm away from this, uh, in the area that I live, but the thing that I, I, I use the North Walker Road and it's roughed up. And I think about exactly that, who's paying to maintain it? And if the truck traffic is what is contributing heavily to the damage to it, is there a way to recoup what it costs to repair it? You know, that's, that's what I was thinking about with the enforcement. Would define coverage, probably not, but, uh, so either to keep them off of it or which I understand, you know, why not? And I'm thinking North Walker and Gulf Road, all of it is our, the Wokke residents town taxes paying to subsidize the use of that road for all these commercial entities.
The answer is yes.
I don't like that.
Right.
I don't either. How much of the overweight permits? Cause one of your emails said that we, we charge a fee for that and
It's a, it's an administrative fee, so it's
It's what the state says we can charge.
Five dollars single, $10 per three.
Yeah, so it's, it's not
Then we have to make copies and mail them copies. They're all supposed to have a copy in their glove compartment of their truck.
What, what the overweight permit is really doing is ensuring that there is insurance. And if they wreck a bridge
Or a road or something. Out of curiosity, the other bridge you were talking about earlier, is that the one that was, used to be further down?
The Fort Hill Bridge, right?
Why was that taken down and not replaced? Just happen of Ford. It was, it was out of code and to replace it plus re-angulate. The buttments, because like I said, you had to go like this 90 degrees to get on it from Fort Hill. It was easy access off the North Walker Road. But they had to then try to angle it and you would have had to put in the buttments.
And the school street bridge, that originally was Route 50.
And to replace a bridge, like to go for a bridge, any idea what that would cost to replace?
How was the school street bridge priced? What's that up to?
School streets.
300 and
No, that's just our part, 5 million, 5 million for this one.
Wouldn't Gulf Road be like the Burke Road and that would probably be around the same size or 400 something thousand?
Well, the whole thing is 850,000.
I bet that's a million dollar bridge.
I'm sure.
Because they'll measure the flow of the water. And then they size the bridge for the flow of the blood. That bridge will be again, probably half as dull as the one
Well, yeah, they've already said where the abutment should be when we met. You know, they should be way back.
Remember that no through truck traffic ordinance sounds useful in that the businesses in Wokke would still be able to access the road. It would push truck traffic to Harde. Which
Well, that would I would do to the North Walker Road.
Just the Gulf Road. Lucian's comment about the turn ripped a little bit, I think Richard.
I think they would have to go up and turn around somewhere.
We really need somebody to help us with that North Walker Road and that's why I told him it was my number one. We really need somebody to help us with that North Woke Road and that's why I told him it was my number one priority. I go down that turn maybe four or five times a day. I don't like it. You hold your breath. The car is coming over the hill. You can't always see them. It's, it's dangerous.
And motorcycles go like you wouldn't believe.
Oh, yeah, if somebody is moving at a good clip, you're pretty well, you've had it. I mean. Because how old, how old you are is, or even how good your reflexes are. You just. Modern cars are not going to get out of the way in time if something's really open on that road.
And I'm sure the road base, if it's like anything like my house in the back hill, that's all blue clay until it gets to over there. That's, that whole road base is probably all blue clay, has no road base to it anyways, so. The biggest problem, that's part of road base, so it'd be minus.
Oh, yeah. And I've talked to Dylan about that, but we just. You need to do like what they did with Route fifteen, dig it all up, put gravel down, let people travel it, put gravel down, travel it for a while and then save it.
Do it again?
All right, so it's getting away. You have all the information. Um, I'm going to put it on the agenda for next week. I want you to think about it, do some research. I guess it's leave it how it is and enforce it or raise it, um, are some of the options, or maybe you'll have one of your own. I'd like to make a decision next meeting. Okay?
There's a lot to think about on that.
That would be the twenty.
Okay, we'll go back quickly to the paving grant, summer plans. I just wanted to let you know that we got a, a paving grant from the state. The, their amount is a hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred and four dollars for the North Woke Road. Dylan, um, so our match will take up just about all the money we have in paving. For this small section of the North Woke Road. So Dylan is planning to use the paving money in this year's budget. To try to, uh, do some leveling of where all the, the wheels, you know, were sunk in and the holes and so forth. And then, uh, do this grant next year because it's good until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. So that's his plan. I just wanted to let you know that we did get one of those grants. Emer, local emergency operation plan. Steve Prince is here today. He worked hard on this and, um. So we need, uh, it was submitted, but we didn't realize that it needed to first be adopted by the select board. And basically it just sets out that, um. Who our emergency coordinators are and their contact information and share, and then, you know, we have three shelters, shelters.
Resources.
Yeah, resources and so forth. This is just, um, something that's required. Uh, so we just need to adopt it. Do you need to read it or anything? It's just paperwork with names and stuff.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the, the post.
This is the L A M P. I'll second that.
We have any other questions? Do you want to add anything, Steve?
No.
Okay.
I think we're a little messed up in there. I'd like you to put your time out to let Alec know about it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's okay.
Yeah, she, I signed it, she got it.
I just have.
We both signed it and she got it.
I just have a lot of history, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. So, um, I need to sign it and, um. You sign it. I'm not sure where, I guess I signed it here. You want to just sign it or you want to hang out?
You don't mind?
It's been a long day.
Yeah.
Steve, I just need you to come in and, um. Bring your driver's license and your security card.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sign your, sign of this line.
I have a check for you when you can.
And then, uh, print name. Okay, I'll see that.
Long, long day. Thank you. Have a good night everybody.
Street Navy ordinance. I hope this is the final rendition of it. I've given you all a copy. Deb wants to work on one little section, which is fine, but so you need to read this. You need to let me know if I've left anything out or something isn't clear because we're going to have a public hearing next week. To adopt this. And get it. That's okay. And it'll be really hard to adopt it and sign it if I have to make changes, so I'd like to know how it's done. Transfer station, glass collection, verilated mess workers.
I think we covered most of this, other than glass collection, but.
Yeah, but we also did not talk about, um, we've talked about maybe some of us, um. Chipping in and going up there with some of our time.
Cleaning up the messing?
No, working.
Oh, working.
Cause he doesn't have help.
So I was up there last weekend and break up the, the bear. That must have been a fun thing. It was a great thing.
They like papers.
What's that?
Yeah, that is.
Too much love.
Thank you.
Ran into the bear there one year. I was in my car, which was good because it was a stare down.
It was.
Finally just tooted down and he just looked at me and I know if he could have made a rude gesture, he would have. He just turned around and said, screw you, I'll be back later. Anyway. But he does make a singular mess.
Wouldn't it be nice to catch him up there with a paintball gun?
Oh, I'm not sure. I really wouldn't.
You sure?
That'd be about like baking my wife and going to Mexico. Those things you just don't do.
I know you don't swag with white swag, right?
Yeah, seventy-five guys. Eh, I suppose I had one foot at the door of the car and I couldn't, I've got coffee, I have some chairs on the car, so. Yeah, I guess it'd be hard.
So we talked, um, with Susan Alexander, uh, back a while ago about the idea of separating the glass. And she sent some information on that. They're saving about, um, thirty-five hundred dollars by doing that. But it seems like right now it wouldn't really work because we, that you have to really separate it and someone has to manually make sure, um. Only like glass bottles go in there. It can't be ceramic or plate, so, um, there's two steps to this separation.
You have to have a sorter.
Right.
That's what you're giving being those.
A sorter with a five cell cattle prod. You remember those?
Right.
I guess, I remember when I worked for solid race district, you'd have people come through and they'd look you right in the eye. And just. Pitch. Now they said, oh, this is all recyclable stuff. They took out of the grandmother's refrigerator and it's full of food.
No, it's not.
And it was supposed to be civil.
No, what?
I mean, if people are going to be so deliberately obtuse. Sometimes diplomacy is wasted.
But I think this glass idea is, it's a good one.
Yeah.
But it has to come after we've solved our staffing.
As, as you don't have Rome. You'd have to have several, separate fifty-five gallon drums.
Yeah, that'd be.
No, it's even fifty-five, so you'd pick it up. I mean, you'd probably.
Do you need one for clear?
Would they want to separate it by colors?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, if you could just read it.
But anyway, when we get, uh, I think we'll bring this back up again, uh, because I think it would be a, um, good savings. For the town, but right now, like I say, we don't, um, we need more, more staffing up there.
Also, we can, can you bring up tires and the present tires considering they've gone up of what we're paying to get rid of them?
Well, you have to communicate with us if you want.
Well, I just found that out today. He brought me a bill.
Who?
Uh, K and S. He went, picked up the tires and there was a hundred and forty-seven.
And that's a real lot, but what's he charging us?
Well, he's charging us the five dollars, but then skip.
Each?
Ten, yes. Um, but then if some of them have rims and I don't know if Sylvia is charging them, he charges the extra three dollars if they have rims per tire.
I know they used to, everyone used to charge at least an extra dollar because they've got to be stripped. Oh, yeah.
We're paying five dollars a tire.
And are we charging five dollars? All right, so definitely put that on the agenda that we need to.
Well, we get a rate of price. I mean.
Meeting.
Yeah, cause it didn't cover our overheads. We're paying the same residency cost to now.
Slurp or delinquent tax agreement with landowner?
Okay, this is, uh, the agreement that the town has with Krista Perkins. And she has fallen behind on her property tax. So now it's two years of property tax, um, and also fallen behind on the transfer station agreement. She has applied for, uh, Vermont Housing, uh, loan. Or not loan, it's actually a grant. And the governor just signed earlier this month that anybody who has an application in. Cannot be put up for tax at I R S, I was of it, yeah. So that's where she's at. We verified her application and it is in, it's there. I talked to the, uh, the housing authority about, you know, what their decision making, uh. Turnaround is and, um, I don't know if it was Snickers in the background or something like that.
Oh, the twelfth, I never even remember their.
Twelfth, never, right. So anyway, it, it is happening. It's working and it's helping people out definitely and, uh. So that's a good thing for her, but we are left with how much on trash?
Over four hundred dollars.
Four hundred dollars, yeah. That she owes us, um, trash. So I'm going to get in touch with her about that. She did, well, she sent one of her relatives or whomever. To, uh, quick hundred dollars toward.
The taxes.
Yeah, and that was rejected.
Because we didn't have payment plan in place at the time, because you guys had said no more payment plan.
So. So anyway, I will speak with her after getting. I don't, I don't know what else we can do. You know, there's small claims courts, uh. I think the town did a good thing, did a good faith. And it didn't work.
We're done all weekend, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Now we just have to collect, yeah. And take everything that he gives us. So that's that.
Okay, Town Garden and Depot Park Committee creation. You want to talk again on that, Deb, or no?
Yeah, that'd be great. I have, uh, sent an email, uh, suggesting that the town adopt, uh, or, you know, recognize. An actual committee that would be, uh, sort of overseeing the Town Garden and Depot Park. The history is that when the town received the A A R P grant. One of the requirements was that there would be a volunteer group that was involved. And that group has been, um, what's been called Women of Woke. And, uh, that was formed by me, um, last. Eighty, a year ago, March. And initially there was, uh, pretty good interest and people were generally excited about volunteering. And helping with the creation of the, uh, Town Garden. This year, uh, volunteerism has drawn considerably. To the point where there is no one other than, you know, basically me and one other women, woman, uh, tending the garden. And the idea for the garden is that it is a town garden. We are starting now to have. A farmer's market every Wednesday from four to six when town offices look, uh, open late. So that people in town will get the idea that they can come and pick up vegetables. And just pay a donation. There's no, you know, we're not collecting money for the vegetables. And, uh, everything that we have invested in the garden has been based on. Uh, well, other than the select board's initial startup money, everything else has been, uh, through fundraiser dollars. We, uh, raised over a thousand dollars, uh, for the garden, uh, since we started last year. And, uh, so want to continue our efforts there, but it's at the point where, oh, and then as far as the park is concerned. We, the town does have the mowing contract with Brad Blaisgel, who, um, you know. When he had entered into that contract three years ago, was just mowing a big open green space. Uh, which is now a park full of obstacles and raised beds and all sorts of things. And so, uh, it's a very different deal for him and he does not, and I suppose fairly does not. Maintain the park as it should if it's going to look like a town park. As, uh, for example, you know, just doing, um, weed whack. And, uh, you know, moving some of the benches and chairs so that it can be mowed under there instead of having weeds corruptly flat. And, uh, taking care of the area over by the, uh, gazebo or pavilion over there. Because there's now been installed, uh, charcoal grill and, you know, um, the bike rack can be used. And with the rail trail that's going to be completed by the, end of fall, hopefully. Uh, we need to have, uh, dedicated volunteers who are going to have. A vision for the future and, uh, be able to pay attention to the needs of the garden and the park. And, uh, not have that just fall to, uh, to people. That's my report.
So all your volunteers just dried up.
And blew away.
So we can, um, designate a. Committee, um, and then advertise for that.
Yeah, that's great. I, you know, Linda Brady and I would most definitely want to be participants, you know, be involved in the committee. But, you know, we just wanted to have more of a commitment rather than just a loosey goosey. You know, volunteer organization and someone who could then, uh, make more of a commitment and say. make more of a commitment and say, yes, I belong, you know, to a town committee.
Could you maybe write up a list of what you see right in the future that the needs are? I know that could be expanded, but when people ask, you know, what does that mean for me?
Yeah.
Water plans or something, yeah?
Yeah.
And how does the rest of the board feel about just putting it out there as volunteers to? You know, probably. They'll put on a website, front porch forum, asking for volunteers. And so if this is a town committee, if you're actually meeting to plan and envision things, it will have to follow our, our public meeting rules. If you're just working in the garden and mowing, of course not.
Oh, I have one other issue as well. Initially, you know, when we had the select board funds and we had our money that we were raising from our fundraisers, Belinda's treasurer had set up an account with Union Bank, a checking account that was separate for, you know, Wilkett Community Garden. And then, as it turned out, we realized that the account requires a $500 minimum or else we get dinged seven dollars and fifty cents as a fee. Since these are fundraiser dollars, we can't operate with $500 that we can't access in funds. And so I would ask that, since this is a town committee, that the checking account comes to an end and that, you know, there be, I don't know, a line item or.
Just go back into the general fund and just, you know, have a section for that.
As long as you should, with the auditors, instead of, we need to set it up as a designated funds that can't, like the cemetery or whatever it's called, so it doesn't roll over into the.
It is.
Yes. Do we need to vote on making that?
Uh, yes, you have to have permission that it will go back into the general fund, it will close the account. But it will be, it will be like the schoolhouse committee where they have funds that are allocated to them and the committee makes the decision of how to spend.
So it will go, so what is the name that we're looking for?
You want to call it.
No, the name of the, where the funds are going to be.
Restricted.
Restricted, that's what I'm looking for. So I'll make a motion that we close out the account at the Union Bank for the Town Garden and Depot Park. And that we take that balance and put it into the general fund as restricted funds to be only designated for that use.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Thanks.
So setting the tax rate.
Well, this is good news, guys. No, it really is. So I've given Linda what is the home state. And the state rates for the homestead went from 1.6757 down to 1.5584. So that went down about 11 cents. That's on the school portion. The non-home residential tax rate went from 1.7111 down to 1.6029. So that's almost 11 cents, about 10 and a half. Now, the town, we did we did go up a little bit. We went from 1.1 million up to 1.2. But we actually, because we have enough, how do I say, revenue, yeah, revenues to offset a lot of our expenses, we went down on the town. We did go up on the highway and we did go up on the veterans exemption, but last year was 0.7703. This year is 0.7678. I pretty much call it a wash. So you guys did really good with your budget. I want to commend you on it. So the tax rate overall for homestead has gone down about 12 cents for the town, for homestead. And non-residential has gone down about 1. So hopefully the tax campus will be happy this year.
Do you know why the school rate went down? Is it because there was so much funds in the education? Now, I know the governor wanted to give some of that money back. Is this how they did it?
They didn't.
That stayed in there. That came down and that's official, it's not changed. I checked with the Mont apartment taxes to make sure there were no problems and checked with the town clerks and their rates all went down.
Right, but, so this money in the education fund to lower the rate. But the governor also wanted to give money back to the citizens of Vermont, and I wondered how he was doing that. I heard it was going to be $125,000, so about 100, no, about $125.
Each.
Basically. And I didn't, it doesn't, I wondered how he was doing that, whether it would be in rebates.
I will say that the prebates are much higher this year than I've seen, and there's more of them.
So maybe that's where it's going.
Some are getting an approved date to actually pay the town taxes and get a refund. And that is very unusual. It could be there, I'm not really sure. But I did just, today alone, I checked with the Mont apartment taxes, education, to make sure that this is the final.
Good news.
Because I didn't want to set the tax rate.
We're taken.
Thinking they might have made it this day.
Yeah, we kept the funds. Education.
Yeah, they didn't move them, they, they.
They didn't touch it.
The schools thought they were gonna, you know, that's why they thought they were going to have an increase, but they went up.
So I'll make a motion to approve the tax rate for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. Homestead tax rate at 2.3262, non-residential tax rate at 2.3707. You have a second?
I'll second then. I'll third.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
I did want to add one note, your listeners went up on, they did very good, they went up on your municipal grant list. Last year was 155 million, this year it's 160. So they found five more million dollars out there.
Okay, I hope that's it, I'm making motions for adjourned.
Yes.
I just have a small question.
No. Long day tomorrow.
I'll second that. He knows if I will.
Thank you for your time, guys.